Good evening. This is the Cortez City Council Work Session slash Special Meeting. Today's Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with A on our agenda, Fire Protestant, Fire Protection District Presentation by Fire Chief Roy Wilkinson. Welcome, Roy.
Thank you.
Um, it should be on, yeah. Unless you want the taller mic. Okay. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you for asking us to come. Uh, we would have a couple more here, but they caught a fire on the way here, so.
Oh, wow.
Um, we were asked to, to come here to provide insight in light of what happened in LA. Um, we were fortunate enough, or however you want to look at it, to send a team there along with two other teams in the area, Upper Pine and also Los Pinos. So they came back on Saturday and filled us in what was actually going on there. It was, it was devastation. It was just nothing that they had ever seen before. A lot of it had to do with the way that the area was manicured, mitigation, but the big thing was the winds and the water. So those are two items that I'm going to cover a little bit tonight. And the items I'm going to cover are the concerns that we have as a fire district. These are things that are items that we want to, we, we have to know what those concerns are so we have a way of taking care of if, in case. Hopefully, it never happens. So these are some things that have been brought to our attention, we're aware of every single day, and we look out for. And the key here is the timeline, getting to the fire as fast as possible. That's the key. So as we go through here, some information that, uh, to kind of give you an information as to what and who we are, who the county has to assist, state and federal. So as we go. Currently, we're in a moderate fire rating. Uh, it's mainly because we haven't had any rain, of course, and, uh, and the winds, et cetera. It has stayed at moderate. We've had multiple people call to ask if they can burn, and we refer them, of course, to, uh, to dispatch, and then we keep an eye on it. Uh, we've had a number of fires due to people welding, due to, uh, burning, slash, et cetera. Um, but all in all, everybody's been pretty good. And as we all know, the community is pretty good and aware of fire. So, you know, that's our enemy, but at the same time, uh, we have to be careful that, that enemy is, is looked after and, and we take care of it, and that's a community, so. So here's some areas of concern that we do have, and I put numbers on and kind of got pictures. I know they're kind of small, but it's the surrounding areas of our city, our community. Depending on the prevailing winds, these areas could be concerns. But of course, we have everything there that's dry, everything from, you know, juniper pinion to, you know, you name it, weeds, et cetera. If it gets dry, it gets starting to burn. It just takes a cigarette butt, and it gets rolling. And it's going to take a little while to see it, but once it shines, shines and somebody calls on it, and we're just concerned in the middle of the night. The big part of this is the weather. California had excess of 40 mile per hour winds, and that was one of the things that pushed it hard. And we get winds, and we get prevailing winds out of the southwest. Where are all of these large fields of vegetation? Most of them from the, in the southwest of our city. Of course, we have some in the north and, and over at Denny Lake Number Four, that area, we're concerned with cattails, because if it starts getting, the cattail starts blowing. Occasionally, we'll get wind out of the east. So these are other items that we're concerned with. So these are all on our radar. In addition to that, we could be affected by items in the county. And again, an ember can fly upwards of a mile or more, depending on the weather, depending on the wind. So these are areas in the CWPP, which I'll talk about here in just a moment, that are concerns on the county level. And again, we can be affected by these, by the weather conditions. So again, we're surrounded by high-risk wildland urban interface, which is a WUI, and that's what they call that. The State of Colorado Forest Service, what they note is any area where man-made improvements are built close to or within natural terrain or flammable vegetation, and where high potential for wildland fire exists, that's where we live. That's where we live. It, we're surrounded by it. So again, you know, it just takes one ember getting up into the atmosphere, and who knows where it's going to land if there's enough wind. So again, we've talked before, brush juniper pinion trees near homes, homes close to each other with large vegetation areas. We have an urban setting. Homes are close to each other. That's a concern. There's nothing we can do about it, but it's a recognition that we do have. In between those homes, we have cars. Cars leak gasoline. Cars have liquids that are flammable and combustible. Uh, highly flammable building materials on homes, on roofs potentially. So these embers could blow, get into a roof between who knows what and take off. They've also been known to get up underneath the eave vents, blow, and get up into the eaves, and here we go, gets up into insulation. We're just talking about embers that blow. We have no idea where they're going to go. There could be countless of them going if they get up with a windy evening on a fire. Manufactured homes in south part of town. And again, they're even closer. And the problem is, is they burn a little quicker just because of how they're made. And they're tight with cars wedged in there, and again, fall back on the other. And of course, we talked about the prevailing winds. So, you know, I have 15 minutes to talk tonight, but I could go on for hours here just because of what we have in our area. So we want to make sure that everybody is aware of the hazards that are potentially there. So what's going to respond? And of course, fire, our district, and how we respond is all a timeline. The faster we can get out the door, the faster we can get water on that fire, the faster we can suppress, uh, get to suppression of the fire. We have 22 red-carded firefighters, and what that means is they're 130, 190 certified. They're wildland firefighters. That's how we can send them out on national or state, of course, local. So we take advantage of training, and we send them out sometimes, like we did to LA, for not just training, experience, et cetera. Uh, we have five to six on shift at one time. And again, here we go, that timeline. We have 25 plus. The problem is, is getting them in if they're in town, et cetera. We have four brush trucks. We have, uh, one type three engine, which is a stubby structure fire engine. You may have seen it. It was in the newspaper. It's kind of a stubby tall fire truck. Uh, that's what we sent to LA. Um, type sixes, we have three. It's a, in a sense, it's a pickup truck with a tank on the back with a pump. They're very agile. They, they can maneuver in places that the type three may not be able to. So we can get to the seat of the fire, which is very nice. So if you don't have trees, just bushes, you can get there. They'll just run them right over their high set. Uh, and of course, two tenders, the water trucks, and we have two structure fire engines, which we can respond also. So we do bring our own water. On top of that, we have mutual aid. We have auto mutual aid in some. And for, and this is just an approximation. So with brush trucks in the county itself, 16. For tenders, approximately 12. Those are the water trucks, and of course, about 12 engines. And those are the structure fire engines. So these all could be potentially called for if needed. So the personnel is possibly there. I don't know how many personnel because it fluctuates in the, each of the other fire districts, but at the same time, there are personnel there. In addition to that, we have the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control, DFPC, which is right over here on Ash Street. They will come in. They have helped us before. Also, we have the Forest Service. Of course, they're over there in Duran, or in, uh, Dolores. So we have other resources that are there, but again, we want to make sure that we hit that early, hit it quick because of that timeline. If we have that wind blowing, here we go. It's going to gather speed, and that's what we don't want to happen. So we'll hit the CWPP, which is the, uh, the, uh, Montezuma County put that together, and the Emergency Manager. And if you look at the bottom, that's the website. It's the Emergency Manager page on the county. And what this does, it's, uh, last one was in 2022, and it is up to date, protect residents and first responders, protect property and critical infrastructure, and protect key environment values and quality of life. What's also nice about this is identifies areas of risk, which we've talked about as the map. They go into it a little bit more in depth. Fosters coordination between stakeholders and create an umbrella plan. It's just like I talked about with the other districts and the fires, or the Forestry Service and DFPC. It also allows for potential grant monies. So those could come in also because you have CWPP. Uh, information, of course, to assist communities recommending for fuel reduction. So it talks about WAP, Wildland, um, Adaptive Partnership. First thing we want to talk about is NFPA Firewise. So let's change gears a little bit. Let's take a look and see what our community can do to us, to mitigate their property. So when it comes to the area around their homes that they can mitigate to get rid of a shrub that's leaning against the house, that if that did take off, catch fire, it's going to catch the house on fire, maybe trim that back or completely take it out, depending on what kind of ground that you have. Is it gravel? Is it grass, et cetera? So they can come in with Firewise. In fact, WAP comes in free of charge and will assist in providing what homeowners can do to help. And so our local, uh, WAP, Wildfire Adaptive Partnership, they're out of Durango. We do have someone who is in Montezuma County, okay? And hers, her name is Celeste Moore. And her contact information is up there, or you can call the fire district, and we'll provide that information also. And she is more than happy to come out. She can talk, will talk to you on the phone, schedule an appointment, come out and assist for helping you mitigate your property or what the problems could be in case that spark does get to your property or sparks or flames. So when it comes down to our concerns as a fire district, as citizens in this, in this community, first of all, immediate response. The faster we can get there, the faster we can put that out or slow it down. Number two is getting other agencies involved. Those in the parentheses, we all train with. We all talk. We all work together. And of course, community respect, and we're talking about fire potential. Everyone here understands the potential that we have when it comes to fire, wildfire. So everybody has to stay together, has to make sure that they watch their neighbor, if you will, and people do. We get a lot of calls of people, my neighbor is, is doing whatever in the backyard. Well, that's okay. Call it in. We'll, we'll swing by to make sure everything is going fine. Okay? So we do keep an eye out. We do keep an eye out. The negatives, the changing winds. Everything, single day, of course, you go out, it seems like it's swirling sometimes. Vegetation, we talked ad nauseam about the vegetation here, which we all know that we have, and it spreads quickly. And of course, the dryness, that's another one, especially right now. And lastly, the remote fire potential. If it does take off, it could start in a small area. Next thing you know, it's going to be in a larger area if it's not reported, if we don't get to it fast enough. Uh, but I will tell you that the community does recognize this. And I'll give you one small example. When the Mesa took off last year, um, we received about 25 phone calls from people driving on 160, letting us know that the fire was up on the Mesa. And you know what? I think that's awesome. You know, it was, it was great because people are looking out for each other. They're aware of the problems that we do have when it comes to the fire potential. And so we, as a community, we have to keep an eye on that. So. Does everybody have any questions? I know that was kind of quick. A lot of information. Yes?
Do you run routine?
Turn your mic on, thanks.
Do you run routine checks? So thanks for being here, by the way, and doing this for
Thank you for inviting me.
Routine checks on the hydrants as far as pressure coming out of them and, and hooking up? And I'm, I'm sure you do, but can you just fill us in on what your regular routine is? Yearly, semi-annually, what do you do?
We do and we don't. We rely on the city. We do have communications with the city. Um, we do not go out and waste water. That's one thing that we do not do or try not to do, but we do train, and sometimes you have to spray water. Um, if there is a hydrant that is opened, we call the city to make sure that it's closed. Um, as for, as for water, though, and working and, and turning the hydrants on and off, yes, we do do that. I mean, that's, that's our, that water is our lifeline.
Question, when, when you send a, a group out to a wildfire, that, we're reimbursed for that by the feds, is that correct?
Are you talking, not locally, we're talking to another state?
Not locally. When, yeah, when we provide assistance, uh, out of state or out of the county, we're, we're reimbursed by that. We're, we're reimbursed by the equipment that we provide and by the, uh, individuals that we, we send and their certification. Is that correct? Or is it just if you're red card certified, you get paid one level?
You, oh, there you are. You want to cover that one, or you want to? Okay, I'll take that one. Uh, yes, we are reimbursed, uh, for, um, travel, accommodations if they're needed, also with the truck and all.
And then also, does the, uh, number of, uh, I, I know equipment plays a part in our ISO rating, correct?
Correct.
The number of individuals that are red card certified, does that have any impact on the ISO rating or not?
The ISO, this year, our ISO is, is going to occur. And so it does change. I cannot give you a 100%, because I'm not 100% sure what they're going to ask this year. Yes, it does come into play.
And Mr. Luke, just as far as the, the reimbursement question, um, we do not make, the only revenue that the fire district generates is from the truck itself. Everything else is a wash. So the salaries, the reimbursement for fuel, um, hotel rooms, all that kind of stuff, there's nothing based on that. But depending on the, the type of truck that goes out is, is what makes the differentiation between what the hourly rate is for that truck that we make.
Is, uh, you said for this fire in Los Angeles, you deployed one truck. Is that the most that we can deploy to an outside area at a time? Or, or how, how many local firefighters can we deploy at, at a time? Or other vehicles as well?
We have sent out a tender. We have sent out, um, it depends on how many wildland firefighters we do have. We do not want to, to cause our community to have shortage of personnel. Um, but we have four that were sent out there. Um, but in the past, we have sent out at one time.
Three?
Three, yeah. I'm trying to remember. Uh, we sent out four and one once, or three and one.
Yeah. So we can send out, basically, we can send out three at a time, but it's all dependent on staffing. And so the way it works with us is during the summer, we bring on extra staff for the wildland division. Um, so we're not, we're not short cutting Cortez or our fire district to send trucks out to make money. Um, we always make sure that we have ample staffing for our, for our trucks on a daily basis. But we can, la, late last year, we were able to send out three separate trucks to three separate incidents throughout the country.
Well, I, I appreciate you guys coming to, to talk about this because we know that this is a real risk for our community. In, uh, 2021, we, in May, we had that fire at Hawkins Preserve, which was really close to that neighborhood, um, down there. And, um, that's not the, you know, that could happen again. Um, but I am, want to congratulate you all because I, I, the community stepped up and saw that you were an important, um, part of our community and supported the sales tax. And so I'm glad that you guys are going to be able to have the resources you need as this, this risk increases for our community.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, if I can close, Chief, um, you know, we had, we went to Mankas, um, December 22nd and had a brush fire over there. We went and helped them with it, burned probably seven to 10 acres. We burned a quarter of an acre down County Road G on Christmas Eve. So you, you hear it. You used to hear the wildland season. It is not a season anymore. It is 100% year-round. And for us to be in moderate fire danger and borderline probably high, um, if we don't start getting some moisture, if we get a light, if we get a start, and we get some temperatures, even in the 50s, with all the fuels being dormant right now, it's going to be a bad day. to be a bad day. So we just continue to ask people to make sure that they're responsible when they are burning and make sure that even if it is a little bit of a windy day, to, to use some common sense and, and not burn. So we've had several brush fires in December and January that we probably, that we shouldn't have traditionally, but it is becoming more and more.
Well, thank you both for being here and, um, helping educate the public too on ways that they can help mitigate their, their risk and, um, just kind of where we're sitting at this, this winter. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to B on our agenda, presentation on fire, fire suppression, water availability by Public Works Director Brian Peckins.
Madam Mayor, City Council, give us a minute to get set up, but we've got a little bit different perspective on the same topic, and, and some of what we were going to present has been covered, so I won't, won't repeat myself. But, uh, we did put out a, a letter from the Public Works Department on the website on January 17th, kind of explaining our position and, uh, and we'll get a little bit more into Okay, we're ready to start. Uh, just a little bit on the Los Angeles County wildfires. Uh, the Palisades and Eaton fires both erupted on the morning of January 7th. Over 40,300 acres have burned and destroyed more than 12,300 structures. The wildfires are being fueled by what the National Weather Service said could be the strongest Santa Ana windstorm in over a decade, 45 up to 100 miles per hour gusts. Some of the problems they faced in Los Angeles County were the Santa Ana winds and dry conditions. Uh, firefighting aircraft were grounded multiple times. Fire hydrants ran dry due to excessive use. Four times the normal use depleted 114 water storage tanks in 15 hours. High elevation tanks couldn't be refilled. The Santa Inez Reservoir was closed since February 24th for repairs, leaving it empty. And then fire hydrants built to extinguish one or two house fires at once, not hundreds of them. With so many hydrants in use, water press, water pressure was reduced drastically and water pipes were damaged. The density of homes in Los Angeles County also added to the ability for the wildfires to grow exponentially. Just a few differences between Montezuma County and, and Los Angeles County. And, and even though Cortez has experienced growth, many of the developments and subdivisions are large lots resulting in overall low residential dens- density. In Montezuma County, we've got 12 people per square mile compared to Los Angeles County, which has 2,344 people per square mile. So it's a huge difference in impact. Uh, Montezuma County is still largely rural and agricultural with an extensive irrigation water delivery system in place, which could be used to supplement water supply when needed. And the natural vegetation of Montezuma, Montezuma County is less dense compared to the vegetation in, in Los Angeles County. And now maybe where we come in is the city of Cortez water supply. Uh, I think most of you know, we have a water treatment plant which has two 3 million gallon storage tanks for treated water. So we have 6 million gallons of treated water, water storage available at any one time. The water treatment plant also has a 20 million gallon raw water storage reservoir on site. And the water treatment plant could be ramped up to 8 million gallons per day if needed. And from the storage tanks, there are three 16 inch main water transmission lines that feed the city with redundant points of entry. In an extreme of fire emergency, I think this has been done in other places in Colorado, the city would be able to supply raw water through the distribution system from the plant. The city of Cortez has over 500 fire hydrants throughout the city. And 2024, which is a typical year, Public Works exercised and tested 97 fire hydrants in their main valves. And the remaining hydrants will be exercised and tested per American Waterworks Association standards following the Public Works Maintenance Plan. Uh, Roy already talked about the, uh, Montezuma County Wildlife Protection Plan. I won't go, go over that again. And then just some recommendations. Uh, I think it behooves us to improve wildfire readiness around the city. Uh, defensible space around homes is encouraged. Continue vegetation management by clearing brush and mowing around the city. Uh, fire resistant construction methods should be encouraged. And all residents within the city limits should attempt to be as wildfire resistant as possible. Accumulated materials which create ideal places for wind driven embers to embed should be cleared out and removed. And we will continue to upgrade outdated fire hydrants and add additional hydrants where needed. We'll also continue to maintain water valves and fire hydrants through regular flushing and exercising. And that, that's a little bit from the city's perspective. Subject, any questions you might have?
Thanks, Brian, for putting this together. This is a very nice presentation. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
What I heard was that we have about 500 hydrants in the city right now and that we're testing about 97 a year.
About 100 a year. So it's like a five-year plan and we'll cycle through all the hydrants.
So you mentioned that they were, uh, tested to a certain standard. What standard was that that you?
American Waterworks Association.
Is that a certain amount of, uh, pressure per, uh, foot per minute or something like that? I mean, how does that work? Um, what is, what is the standard that we sort of go by?
I would have to.
I'm just kind of curious how this works and, and if we're, if we're falling under the, are, are we, what percentage of our hydrants are actually producing what they're supposed to and that sort of data?
Actually, the standards dictate both the total flow and the pressure. Every hydrant on our system is above what it should be, above minimum standards. We'll have one to two every year based on construction, based on repairs that will fall below that level, which we note, note and notify. At most cases, we can get the fire department to let them know that this hydrant is not working or they'll, once in a while, you'll see one that is bagged, that is taken out of service. But all the hydrants that we have are producing at the low end, 55 PSI, which doesn't sound like much, but those are flowing at almost 1,000 gallons per minute. So anytime they crack one to two of those open, they're getting quite a bit of flow.
That's really encouraging to hear. So what I'm hearing from you is that of the ones that are tested, the, the one or two a year that aren't quote, meeting the standard are either replaced or gotten back up online and it's fixed immediately.
Correct. Yes.
That's great news. Thank you for making, saying that. It's reassuring.
Um, you said that the hydrant pressure in like, uh, California was for one to two homes on fire. What, what, how does that compare to ours, I guess?
I think it would be, I, I, I mean, fire hydrants aren't, you know, geared to.
Put out 1,000 homes.
Put out 1,000 homes. You know, that, we just don't have, have the resources to do that. But we don't have that many homes and, you know, it's, it's a different situation, much different here than in Los Angeles County.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it like, we're, we're sitting better than California and even the city of Cortez is in a better place than like the county, but we're still not completely immune.
Yeah, of course.
Just out of curiosity, um, is it to do, to run through all the hydrants once every five years, is that pretty much a normal rate that that would be checked out? It wouldn't be done annually or anything? Just once every five years is way good?
Once every five years would be considered the minimum. Um, but it's almost impossible by the time we get enough staff together to open several hydrants, flow them, get, uh, regulation tests on them, we would have a full-time water crew doing nothing but that. So the amount that they're exercised between the fire department using them, between us using them, us testing them, they're exercised probably more like 200 of them a year.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions, uh, thank you guys for, uh, presenting.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to C on our agenda, a presentation by project engineer McLean Farmer, uh, representing, uh, Jones and DeMille regarding the draft Cortez Transportation Master Plan. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So while he's setting that up, uh, my name's Matthew Lenhart. I'm here with, this is McLean Farmer, um, with Jones and DeMille Engineering. We've been working with, um, the city of Cortez, um, on creating this transportation master plan for the city, so.
Um, I'm McLean Farmer, uh, project manager on the project. The, um, proposal was put out by Public Works, um, and we've been working with Public Works as well as with the planning department, um, as well. Um, and so tonight specifically is to give you a briefing of what the project is, um, update you on where we're at, and then, um, answer any questions you might have. The first thing I'm going to talk about really quick is what a transportation master plan is. Um, a, a big part of that, that is ensuring that you have proper connectivity throughout the city. Um, so looking at congestion points, looking at safety, um, and seeing what needs to be improved on a congestion level, on a safety level, um, looking at, at, a small, uh, aspect of this project is looking at active transportation, um, looking at different alternates to just driving, um, to get through the city. Um, and then also looking at your infrastructure system for the transportation network. Um, specifically, that's what we're going to focus on tonight, and then we'll get into more of the planning in later meetings. Um, and tonight, we also want to touch on, um, the three phases of the project that we're working on, and we'll go through each of those phases and update you on where we're at. So phase one of the project was coming up with a tw- uh, 2050, uh, CDOT plan. So that's planning work that goes on CDOT highways. So that was kind of a, a time crunch. We had to have that completed by October of 2024. That was completed and submitted to CDOT for review, and they're looking at that right now. Um, so that, that has been submitted and they're looking at that for allocating funds in that 2050 plan. The second phase, which we'll show you here tonight, is the pavement assessment that we did for the city. We'll explain how we did that and show you the results from that tonight. Um, we're going to touch on phase three here really quick initially. That's this website that you can see up here on the map that we've created for the city. This will be one of the two final deliverables to phase three. So this website will be, um, housing all of the maps that we're going to show you tonight. And then, um, we'll also be giving the city a report, which we're, we're still working on with Public Works and Planning, so that's at a future date that you'll see that. Um, so I'm just going to turn the time over to Matthew. We're just going to kind of alternate and go over this website. And then if you have any questions as, as we go through it, feel free to chime in, so.
So the intention with this website is that it can be, um, a publicly available interactive tool. Um, so you can have information on there that, um, residents can access, that city council can access, that, um, city staff can access as they're working on, uh, future planning or road maintenance, things like that. So here, this is just the homepage, so there will be a link to the master plan report here, um, once it's completed. Um, and then there's just some tabs at the top here. So this is just kind of some background information on the project, kind of what the project scope is, um, what the goals of the project were, some of the, uh, objectives that were addressed throughout the project, so you can read through that. I won't, um, go through that right now, but that's just a little background information. Um, this page, we've been working with, uh, planning, uh, the planning and zoning department on, uh, updating the socioeconomic information so that it's accurate. So, um, that could be useful, uh, as a reference point in a planning and zoning meeting, commission meeting, or in a council meeting that you can reference, uh, population statistics, housing statistics. And then that data is what we used for some of, is what we're using for some of the future planning on, um, the road maps, um, and future build out of the city.
Um, you'll see on the left there, we have a tab called roadway classification network. That's not completed yet. That's part of this phase three that we're working on. So that'll, that'll be shown to you at a future date. Um, so we're working on that. This tab that you see here is strictly just a map showing, um, what roads are paved within the city, what roads are gravel within the city. Um, this is still in the works as well. It's not finalized. Public Works has not reviewed this quite yet, um, but we wanted to show you what it's going to look like in the end. Do you want to?
It's hard to see the mouse. Do you want to touch on this? So I may, you may have noticed back in, I think it was in September, we laid out some traffic counts. There were some tubes that we laid down on the road. Um, and as vehicles drive over those, it will tell us, um, how fast they're going, what type of vehicle it is, like if it's a semi truck or if it's just a compact car. Um, and then it counts the volume of the vehicles. So this map shows all those points that we counted the traffic. Um, and then if you click on each of these points, it'll pull up a menu where you can see what the traffic volume was, what the average speeds were, um, uh, what the vehicle classification types were. Um, so this is all information that we used in future planning to say, okay, this road has a lot of vehicles. Maybe that's why the pavement is failing is because there's, it wasn't built to handle this capacity of traffic. Or, um, we also used it to plan out future road corridors, um, that could be built, uh, at a coming date. So, um, this information is all here, um, for, uh, anyone to access. Do you have anything else on that? Yeah. Um, this is a map of data we pulled from, uh, CDOT of, uh, crash history throughout the city. So this is from 2021 up to 2023, so just the most recent years. Um, and it just shows locations where there's higher crash volumes. Um, and then there's a table here. I'm not sure why it's not loading, but, um, it shows the, uh, by year, just the types of, uh, crashes that occurred. Um, and so we use this data in determining, okay, is there a need to improve a, an intersection here, add some sort of safety feature, or, um, add a, a separate bypass road or something like that? So this, that's just the crash history right there.
Uh, like I said, initially, we touch on active transportation, looking at different types of transportation in the city. Um, we've looked at existing facilities. You can see there's a distinction between blue and orange lines. Orange lines are bike paths. Blue lines are bike lanes. So the difference is basically you're separated on a bike trail or a bike path from traffic. Where bike lanes, you're with traffic. Um, and you, you know the difference because you have both facilities in the city. And we have, um, just shown a few more, more, um, trails on this map. Not saying this is a final map, but this is what we've come up with, with Public Works at this point, four additional trails in the future, in the future. This next map is a map. This next map is a map, just, this is a very simple map. It's a map showing structures within the city, structures meaning bridges or large culverts. There's not a lot in the city, most of those are in the county. But we just wanna show this for reference to show the different bridge crossings, basically, that's affected by the city.
All right, do you wanna touch on? I think that's kind of it for this, right? Yeah, and we'll come back to this in a minute here, but we just have a reference here. So this is just reference to the land use code, to the city's planning and zoning page, the general plan for the city, and there will be a link to the master plan here. So that's what that page is for. And then this page, we haven't uploaded it yet, but this will just be a definitions page of various terminology that's used throughout the report and throughout the plan. So someone less familiar with the terminology could use this as reference. So really, this is to act as kind of an inventory of your existing transportation infrastructure and as a plan for future transportation infrastructure.
Any questions so far before we jump into the pavement assessment piece?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. So we have, through the planning department, like a master streets plan. So is that incorporating and aligning with that? Or is this gonna inform like the next update of that?
So both. We're incorporating the existing streets plan into this and then building off of that essentially. So making sure that we've looked at not only connectivity, but making sure the roads that have the higher traffic volumes, that they're classified correctly with the classification systems set out by federal highways. So we're trying to match federal highways classification so that C dot's inventory is no different than the city's, so that there's a good connection point between state and federal process, so.
And then one of the maps where you're just showing like potential trails, I just wanna make sure, are you coordinating with the parks department as well? Because most of those trails that are not like bike lanes on roads are in like city parks.
Yeah, we can with Public Works. We can coordinate with them.
Okay, yeah, or if they just talk to Creighton. And then my last question is, what, the document that you sent to C dot, the twenty twenty, or the twenty fifty plan, is that gonna be on this website as well? Okay, great.
It'll be, it's a memorandum based, explaining all of the different projects. There's probably like twenty-five, forty? Forty. I didn't know the exact number, but forty projects within that twenty fifty plan. And then they'll select, I'm guessing, select out of those which ones they wanna do.
Okay, great. Any other questions from council right now? Okay, you can keep going.
All right. Can I have, I don't, yeah, go to Biolytics. There we go, okay. So I'm gonna first explain to you, I'm gonna go through and explain to you how we did your pavement analysis, and then I'll have Matthew explain to you basically the treatment types we selected, or the results of that plan, and then give you what we chose for each road. And not, we're not gonna go through every road, but show you overall what it looks like. So the way we did this was with a software that we partner with called Biolytics. They're a German-based company backed by Volkswagen, that's their funding source. And they're a AI-driven technology that takes the human factor of assessing roads out and uses AI technologies to assess the pavement conditions. So it's telling you what condition your roads are in. It's taking machine learning and using that to assess what types of distresses are on your roads. So you can see, if you scroll up. So you can see in this video, I'll try and expand that. So you can see in this video, kind of. On my screen, you can see it at least, but it's picking up, you can see those little squares on the screen. As we drive down the road, it takes a picture every ten to twelve feet. And what it's doing is assessing every picture for cracking, potholes, well, a bunch of different types of cracking, potholes, and distress types. So it'll assess every point, then lump those points into a segment and give you a segment score. And that's how we can develop a pavement management plan for the city on what's best for the city to allocate their funds to. And it's not us telling you it, it's the machine telling you it. So there's no human factor in telling you what to do with your road. Well, there is a human factor, of course, but we're taking the assessment piece and making it machine, basically a robot's doing it for us. Okay, I'm gonna zoom out here.
Make sure there's a green light on the microphone.
There we go. Okay. So you can see on the map here, there's a bunch of dots. Every ten to twelve feet, you have an image. So if we click on, if you zoom in here, you're basically getting a Google Earth street view of every street in the city. And each point has a score, five being the worst, one being the best. So if I, that's, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail because I could talk for hours on this, but if I zoom out here, you can see the results that we got. I'm gonna have Matthew talk about the segment data and then talk about the planning side on what we planned for the city.
So we tried to focus on preserving your good roads before we repair the roads that are in poor condition. It's a lot cheaper to save a good road than it is to repair a bad road. So anything that is green or blue is basically a road that's in good condition. And anything that's yellowish is a road that's in fair condition. And then anything kind of orange and red is a road that's in poor condition. So we went through each road and selected a treatment type for each different segment of road. And each segment's about a block of road. And so on this plan segments page, you can see that we have a plan for each segment, and then we divided them out by years and by treatment types. So the preservation jobs on the roads that are in better condition will occur in twenty twenty-five. So that's just like kind of a protective coating that you'd put on the road, like a micro-surfacing or a chip seal, if you're familiar with those. And then in twenty twenty-eight, we have a plan for a kind of a road rehabilitation project where you take roads that are in fair condition and kind of, it's a little more in-depth than just a preservation coat, but that's, that, I don't know.
Yeah, like an overlay. If you're familiar with how asphalt works, you can mill off the asphalt and then put an overlay on it. Microsurface is like a little thin layer of asphalt mixed with aggregate.
What's fog sealing?
Basically painting the road.
Okay.
But it protects it a little bit, but it's not very in-depth. So, and then in twenty thirty-one, we have a plan to reconstruct roads that are in poor condition that receive more traffic. So these are your high-usage roads that would require a more in-depth treatment. And then in twenty thirty-four, we have a plan for reconstructing roads that don't receive as much traffic. So these are like your local roads. And we have a reconstruction treatment type that is more inexpensive than for higher-volume roads because you just don't need the same level of structure as you do on roads that receive more traffic. So this plan, we've incorporated into the report here in a short-range plan, and you can see the specified treatment type, if it loads. So you can see the specified treatment type for each of the roads selected for the short-range plan. And then in the long-range plan, you can see the same thing. So the short-range plan would be the zero-to-five-year plan, and the long-range plan would be the five-to-ten-year plan.
One thing to note on that as well is, this is all contingent on the city having funding, right? Like, we can't just pull money out of the air and make this happen. It's, it would be awesome if the city could get this done in a ten-year period and have the funding or find the funding. But it's all very contingent on finding grants and other funding resources to be able to do these type.
But we have tried to select the treatment type that makes the most sense for each road.
Any questions for us on that piece?
It's not specifically on that piece, but when will this, when will the website information be available to the community?
We're trying to finalize the report with planning and Public Works. We wanna have the report uploaded in order to publicize it, basically. I'm guessing it'll probably be about a month.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Well, just really quick before we, we end, we appreciate working with the city. We just opened our office here in Cortez. We really like working in the communities that we live in. Ty Kopenhafer is our office manager here. He's actually at a Denver conference this week, so he wasn't able to attend. But we really enjoy working in those communities which we live in, and we hope to keep working with you in the future, so. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for all this work, to you guys and to staff. You know, infrastructure is one of our priorities, and I think it's gonna be a priority for future councils. You know, our roads are, we're behind on road maintenance, we're behind on waterline maintenance. And so I'm hoping that we can let that data overlap to really find what are those priorities when we don't have much money to do projects. But, you know, we can, this will help focus our efforts on what is immediate versus what can kind of wait. And I appreciate what you guys are saying about like, also work and protect the good roads instead of just like ignoring those while we're working on the bad ones, because then those are gonna become the bad ones and be more expensive. All right, well, thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for the presentation. All right, we're gonna move on on our agenda to, we're gonna interview two applicants for the Cortez Historic Preservation Board.
Mayor Medina, Diane is here, and Brian should be here shortly.
Okay, great. Yeah, we're actually slightly ahead of schedule, so we can start with Diane. We'd like to invite you to the podium. So we have a set of questions here that we're gonna just run through. And then we'll, and then we'll interview the next candidate. I think there's only one seat, and so we'll make a decision at our regular meeting tonight. Okay, so do we wanna start with Dennis, and then we'll just go down the line with the, with the questions?
These are really easy questions.
Oh, good.
Do you have any personal experience with historic preservation projects? If yes, please describe.
Okay, yes, actually, I do. More in the archaeology realm. I started a nonprofit friends group for Canyons, the Ancients National Monument, and directed that for a number of years. I've also done quite a bit of archaeology in the area. My late husband and I did cultural resource inventory survey work for private property for about eight or ten years, and we recorded archaeological sites for private properties and recorded those for the state. And let me see what else. I've done quite a bit in the educational areas also.
I'm assuming you have a degree in archaeology?
Actually, I have some master's hours. My degrees are in dance, believe it or not, way back in the seventies. And then in elementary education, I taught elementary school for many years.
Diane, how do you see the historic preservation as a benefit to the community?
Monosumon County and Cortez itself have a really interesting and long history, both pre-contact as well as historically. And I feel like it's important to maintain those things so that we know where we came from, where this area came from, and to also give people who live here that sense of pride of where we live.
Thanks for coming and being interested in serving. And can you explain, can you, how would you explain historic preservation to a Cortez resident?
Okay, historic preservation simply means that we are maintaining a structure or an area in perpetuity so that it will be the same as it always has been. And I know that there are certain rules and laws about, for example, a historic home, what can be maintained there and what can be changed there. But to work with the community to know about that so that they, again, feel that sense of pride, but to work with them and to talk with them about that.
What do you know about the history of Cortez?
Okay, let's see. I know quite a bit how the county came about and about John Moss and the naming of the county and the city. And the city of Cortez itself originating down near the Mitchell Springs area, and that it eventually came up here. And the town planner for Albuquerque was called in here to create the original town plat. Let's see, and then, you know, as, as time went on, I mean, I've read quite a bit about the town, the town history.
Okay, Diane, I have the most difficult question of all.
These were pretty hard.
So far, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. What is your favorite historic building in Cortez?
Ah, my favorite historic building in Cortez? I think it's kind of a tie between the Pioneer Printing Building that came in from Rico, I think, is where it was from. And of course, the Colkins Building I find to be interesting and beautiful. I was in there a bit when, when I first moved here. In fact, that's where I met you, Matt. I taught at the middle school, and I was over at the Colkin Buildings a few times. But those, those are lovely buildings. I don't know, it's kind of hard to say, the Wilson Building, gosh, all of it. I just love it. It's, it's old, it's quaint, it's, it's us, it's Cortez.
Well, thank you so much for your time and your interest in the board.
Okay. All righty, thank you so much.
All right, I'd like to invite Brian Uquinto to the podium. We have a set of five questions that we're just gonna run through as a council. And then there's only one board seat, but two applicants, so we'll be making decision at our regular meeting tonight. All right, and then do we wanna start, Matt, with you this?
Welcome, Brian.
Do you have any personal experience with historic preservation projects? If yes, please describe.
Yes, so for me, I have, I work professionally as an archaeologist, so I've been doing that for fifteen years. I have both degrees in historic preservation and archaeology, master's degrees in archaeology. I would say as far as historic preservation goes, I've done a lot with national register nominations, listing sites to the national register, also doing some stabilization-type projects with historic buildings. Yeah.
Historic preservation as a benefit to our community?
I think, you know, Cortez itself, like, we are a community that has always had heritage preservation. You know, Mesa Verde largely with our, you know, prehistoric past in this area, but we also have, you know, a historic town and it's very rooted in our history and culture here. And I think everybody kind of has a role to, to kind of continue that leg- legacy as a community.
So Brian, how would you define historic preservation to a Cortez resident?
Yeah, I think historic preservation is a, it's something that everybody has a role in. It's preserving our history and it's preserving our history as a community. It's, you know, it can be prehistoric Mesa Verde or it could be some of our historic homes in the neighborhood. You know, it's, yeah, I think a role that we all have with.
Brian, how do you know about the history of Cortez? What do you know?
Cortez was founded in 1886, as Diane said, really down by Mitchell Springs. And then we have a pretty long legacy of ranching, agriculture, heritage tourism, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Just a little side note, my mother is turning 92 next month and she's lived in Cortez all her life. She was part of the construction crew that built the Ute Mountain. But anyway, what is your favorite historic building?
So my favorite historic building is our house. So we live in the historic house home on Monizuma. So I believe that's 5MT 22205. And that's, was from Cleo Harp and he was on the, I guess it was like the Cortez Furniture Co. back in the 1950s and 60s. So, we found some stuff from that shop during some of our renovations, so, so, thank you.
Dennis's mom probably knows some.
Probably.
All right, that's what we've got for you. Thank you for your interest in the board, really appreciate you being here tonight and we'll, we'll let you both know on the decision that's made. And, and the one that isn't chosen, we encourage you to keep your interest because we've got other board positions. And more seats will always come up, so, you know, stay engaged. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We're going to move on, on our agenda to, E is general council discussion. Does anyone have a topic they'd like to bring up?
I just have a question, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if the, if we've seen an uptick in input on the land use code, kind of just with recent advertising and things like that?
Yeah, I believe Rachel Marshmings is in the room this evening. I'd like to call upon her to comment on that, please.
Rachel, just, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Rachel. That, that wasn't fair. I, you had food in your mouth. I just was wondering if there was an uptick in interest in the land use code with all the advertising stuff that's been done lately?
Oh, yeah. We have, we have worked hard to get it out there in as many ways as possible, through an email list that we've created through the process to all our, to our committee that was part of it, to the paper, to Facebook, of course, and flyers around town. And we have gotten a few comments. Our consultants check the page where everything is posted to see if there have been any posted comments. Most of the comments, I've, I've gotten a few phone calls and, and an email, so not a huge amount of comments yet. We're still, we're, we're still hoping because we'd like to, you know, clarify questions or, you know, get those ahead of time so that we can, we can address them before it comes to P and Z and council.
Okay. Did you have something, yeah, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions just to get updated. We, we spoke about the lodger's tax and kind of re, coming back and circling back around to that again. I was wondering if there was, if there's any plans or what, where we're at in that process?
Yeah, so lodger's tax is governed by our charter directly. So, the article I sent out to council on that, I'm trying to get you to think down, but really before, you know, and we do need to have that conversation, it's not pressing, but what needs to occur first is a charter update. So, once we get that updated, there's that and several provisions that need to be updated in the charter, so I'm very hopeful that we can get moving forward that.
So, what is our timeframe on that? Do we have a timeframe on where we're going to be looking at the charter update?
That is, uh...
Come up with charter recently?
Yep. That lends solely in the city attorney's office. That, that's in his wheelhouse. I know he's watching and listening this evening and he's well aware of that and he could, would be better to, wanted to comment on timeline on that.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions if it's okay. Did we ever come up with a time on the council work session in April or May or is that still out there pending?
Yeah, no, we have not, but we will get on that this week to try to identify some, some dates. What I did not hear from council, and this would be a good time to talk about that, and I heard from no, didn't hear from anybody, and I, I posed the question, would you all prefer a work week, or a work day, a midweek day, or a Saturday?
I prefer midweek.
Okay.
I would agree with, I would agree with Dennis on that last time was midweek and that worked well.
I was just going to say, I, I, I think that the week, during the week works well, if possible, a Friday, because I think that does give some...
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would agree with a Friday over a Thursday.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah, I, I think either a Thursday or a Friday would probably work best.
Okay, thank you. I will, with that information in hand, we will identify a date, so.
Okay.
Thank you, council. Thanks for that question.
I have one more, I have one more question, questioner to bring up. Councilmember De Haven spoke at one point in time about the Proposition 122, which turned into the Senate Bill 23-29, which has to do with the natural medicinal regulation and all, having to do with the, what's coming down the pike at us. That's the one that has to do with the mushroom administration and the like. And my understanding is that our city attorney is going to be able to sort of be the one who's going to help guide us through that. But I'd like us to be kind of prepared and thinking about this ahead of time and I didn't know if it was a reasonable option, to develop a work group or something of coun- of council members who are interested, who want to at least look, delve into it a little bit deeper and then maybe come back to council with recommendations or work with the city attorney. And I wanted to see what everyone thought about that, because there's only limited things that we can do. We can regulate the time, the place, and the manner of the operation of the health center. So, those are things that we can have an impact on and I think we need to look at it for our community's needs ahead of time and not be caught later on down the line. My understanding is that they're in the process right now, that the state is in the process right now of training up, of developing and starting to train up for the implementation of the healing centers and the administrators or the facilitators who are going to be administering the medication. So, I think we should, need to get on this.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea and I just want to interject, because I think Matt was, if I remember correctly, Matt was on council when the legalization of marijuana came down and they went through that whole process. So I'd love to hear that experience, Matt, and how you guys approached it, what worked, what didn't, what we could do to this time around.
Yeah, absolutely. And what you're referring to actually is before retail marijuana was approved, approved. So that was during the medical marijuana time. So it's been lots of years, as you can imagine. I was, at that time, the mayor pro tem for the city and we had one other person from council and then I believe another eight people from the community represented different aspects of the community. So, people who were interested in opening a facility, for example. We had some people who were part of a group that was, you know, very much opposed to opening or approving any medical marijuana facilities. And then we had some people who were a part of, what do they call it? I can't even remember the term. Where basically you're a proxy for someone else, like you're basically kind of in charge of their plants, so to speak. And we ended up meeting for, twice a month, for six months, actually, to talk about it. And the people who were representatives from council came back and would give updates, but of course, anybody on council or anybody from the public could attend those meetings. So, I guess what that could look like and what Ms. Randall's bringing up would be that it could happen, you know, in council chambers, for example, a couple times a month leading up to a decision and just making sure that the public would also have input during that time, they could ask questions. One of the things that we did, I think that was really effective, is we invited someone from the state of Colorado to come down and just get their pulse, like this is a brand-new thing. What does this look like, potentially for our community? What are some of the standards in terms of distance and those sorts of things? So, I believe, you know, we took it very seriously. That's, we met quite a few times and had open public input and we had a good representation, I think, on the committee as well.
Okay, so, yeah, April, to your point about like a subcommittee, that sounds like a good idea, that, that's kind of a, a normal approach, okay.
Well, before we go all the way down that, that road, so what councilmember Keefauer talked about was back when communities had a lot more say over whether to accept it or not. We don't have a choice as whether to accept this and so the questions are far more narrow than the marijuana issue. It's, it can come whether we want to or not. All we can do is regulate time, place, and manner restrictions and in the research that I was able to do on it, the, there's, there's some, there's minimal questions for the council. And honestly, before we form a subcommittee, and of course, we will do whatever council wants, but before we do that, might I suggest that we, we renew the conversation. In March 23, I actually delivered a educational to the council. That was before the election, but we can renew that. And then, we actually have some draft ordinances that we can talk about, but really, we're talking about distances from schools and parks. We're talking about hours of operation. We may have a zoning issue and Rachel and I are going to have a, a larger conversation on that. I, I'm not sure if we can do that. There's, possibly, but, but not likely. So, we will have to do that, but I would suggest let's bring those questions to council first and then if we feel like we need a larger conversation about it, we can take it, you know, more behind the scenes and do a, a, a subcommittee on it, but, but I think you'll find that our questions are pretty narrow and the seats you're in now are probably one of the best places to discuss that in public.
So, city manager, are you telling us that you're going to get back with us on this after you have a chance to explore the options you talked about, maybe get back with us in about a month with sort of, and bring it up again? Is that the plan?
I would like to do that, council, and, you know, and it sounds like that's the will of council, but I would not want to wait a month, I'd want to wait two weeks. And, I mean, I got to see what's on our schedule and talk with our, but I think we should have time the next workshop to do that. This is not that complicated, to be quite honest. Our, our choices are very narrow.
I would request that I, that you would put it out for about a month before you actually bring anything to the council so that I can, I will not be here on the next meeting on the...
Fair enough, then, maybe what I will do is push it out a month.
Okay.
And then that way, hopefully, councilmember De Haven may be back. We're not sure, but, you know, there's, there's a higher likelihood, but we can do that and I can certainly push out some information in the interim for council to consider as well. There is a large body of information out there, including some lobbying going on from different organizations that are, that want us to make suggestions to you all on what that time, place, and manner restrictions might be. And we're happy to share all of that and maybe I'll start that process, shoot for 30-day or, you know, the, two meetings from now and we'll come in with some more information.
Okay, I attended the mayor's summit, that's why I missed the board-to-board meeting last week. And I can dive more into that during the board reports, but I came back with some ideas that I just kind of wanted to run by you guys. Most of them are around public comment, because, you know, that's always a, you always want to approach public comment differently and it's hard to like, find that sweet spot of like, the best way to approach it. And communities are all doing so many different things and so I just wanted to run some ideas by you guys, but, one of them is having me, having the mayor summarize public comment during the workshop update at the end of our agenda and then that way, we're not only like listening to the public comment, but I'm reiterating it and then that way we can make sure that like, maybe staff is taking action on it or, you know, we'll say like, okay, we'll get an update. So I don't know how you guys think about that, think about that, then, just like, the cold thank you.
I, I think, I think that gives a little more direction for the individuals that give input. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. And then that way it kind of gives us a chance to say anything about it, too. The other one was, what I want to do is, if I realize someone is going to overrun their time, that they've got way more to say, is to just encourage them to submit written comments to Linda, then that way they're part of the packet. And that way we're making sure that if someone doesn't have enough time in the three minutes to get what they're saying said, it can still be part of the official record, just as a written version. And then, and then this one about quasi-judicial is just, just formalizing the start of a quasi-judicial item on the agenda is asking the board, asking our members if anyone has heard anything about the quasi-judicial item beforehand and are they able to be impartial? You know, just being a little more formal with that. And then the last one I wanted to suggest was, I was, I was going to reach out to our House and Senate representatives and invite them to come to council once a year so that they can share kind of what their priorities are for the year and then give them an opportunity for us to share like what our priorities are or what, you know, we want to see happen at the state level or, just, just to build that relationship, you know, because our previous House and Senate state-level representatives never met them, never knew who they were and I just think that like, it would be good to kind of build that relationship, so. Okay. Any questions or opinions?
No, I, I think that particularly, that last item would be great. I think the, the stronger relationship we can have with our state representatives to, to make sure that rural Colorado is being represented is, is the best thing we can do.
Awesome.
I had a quick question for you, Madam Mayor. So when you talk about summarizing remarks that were made, what does that look like? We're not doing a blow-by-blow, we're summarizing in what nature, I guess? I'm more curious about...
I would say maybe the topics that were brought up, you know, of like, several people came to talk about the swim club or, you know, someone brought up a concern about this, you know?
Okay.
Not getting into specifics of like, they called one of us names or, you know, I don't know. But, yeah, just, just kind of the, the intent of like, the topic they were bringing up and if... and if there's anything I, any of us want to say or want to task Drew with.
Okay, thank you.
Or any of our other employees, I guess. Any, okay. Alright, well then we'll end this workshop and we'll start our regular meeting at 7:30.